Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Region School District Number Eight Board of Education Regular Meeting for September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'm going to call, roll call. Judy?
Judy Benz, Lark Marlborough.
Mary?
Mary Hebron.
Jessica?
Jessica Dances, Hebron.
Joe?
Joe Connor, Hebron.
Rob?
Rob Shallow, Hebron.
Sue?
Sue Saltley, Marlborough.
I know Mike is going to come in and out as, as he can. Jean?
Jean Wilson, Marlborough.
Lori?
Lori Lang, Angover.
And Kathleen Boobin, Hebron. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlborough Community Engagement and Intendence at Board of Education Public Meetings is welcomed. The public comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act, you're discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments?
Gando Collins of County Kirkland Road. My answer. Um, I'm here speaking against the proposal to construct the artificial turf. Um, it's not jumping with the presentation towards looking. There was one thing that stuck out that was swaying was the slide that showed the decrease in injuries over natural turf. But when I looked at it, you know, Google started Googling it and found out it wasn't, I don't think, quite right. I think it's actually the opposite. So more recently, a study came out that shows that the injury incidence is higher on artificial turf compared to natural turf in high school athletes. Athletes were fifty-eight percent more likely to sustain injury on artificial turf. Football, soccer, rugby athletes were a greater injury risk on artificial turf. Uproar lower, extremity, and torso injuries also occurred in higher incidence. Quote, and I sent the paper to you. And I've talked to the authors of this and said on this, there are cohorts, because they're not, depends on the data, there are cohorts that are more susceptible to injury. Um, the younger, young people are, um, people that are less athletic, who don't have equipment. Um, also very rough sports like football, definitely. Football shows the highest incidence of greater injury. Um, so I was interested in that because, um, I think we need to be careful to know that sports injuries can lead to low participation, as shown. So we want to minimize any additional painkillers. There's questions about the long-term tip of this little tiger of artificial turf. You know, the city, the whole deal, the city several companies over the effects. And in fact, one of those companies, I think they can be consultants. But there's also listed a lot of the policies that you can look up. Um, professional players. People have self-advancement agencies, like women's soccer that refuse to play artificial turf. In fact, the Olympics now, where Fight Club has deemed that they will only play on natural turf. Natural, National Football Association, same thing. Players associations, um, is adamant that they should have natural turf. I think you could build a natural grass field at Bram and it would serve well. And I'd be comfortable with that. So thanks so much.
Any other public comments?
Um, this is Jean. We do have somebody trying to get in online to speak.
Thanks, Jean. Eric is monitoring that.
I don't have anybody written like that requesting me.
Oh, okay. It says Laura Younger. Laura Younger is waiting to be let in.
And I, I, I think the head of athletics is the one who said that she's waiting to be let in. Eric, we don't have her.
Yeah, I don't have anyone, um, I don't have any pop-up that's requesting anyone to join.
I don't think she has the link is the issue. I put the link in the chat.
Yeah, she's texting me. She, uh, sent me the screenshot. It says someone waiting. You are, you are waiting to be let in, but she seems to be having trouble with it.
Yeah, yeah, I got the same message. This is Judy and I hung up and I logged back in because I got the same message she did. So I'm sure she is getting that. Maybe we send it to her and ask her to hang up and just try again.
She's done it a few times.
Okay.
She's done it from her phone and from her computer. So I don't know what the issue is, unfortunately. I do, I do have a letter.
She just joined.
Oh, she hasn't.
Yes.
Do we have a public comment from the screen?
Hi, can you guys? Yeah. Sorry, sorry for the delay.
No problem.
Laura, I had the same thing happen. You're fine.
Okay, hi, do you guys want me to go ahead?
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm Laura Younger. I am a girls lacrosse coach at Bram. And prior to that, for two years, I was a boys' assistant coach. And I also have two sons that went to Bram High School. Both of them played lacrosse. One of them ran cross country and the other one played football. And all of us have fond memories of ages on the current grass competition field. And I think the relevance for everyone tonight is that we only have memories of games. That our practices for all of us are mid and small and we're on like an uneven, you know, therapy, you know, practice field. Um, very often on all of those teams that a coach or a kid's played on, um, there's two squads and maybe in a bar suite, squeezed onto a field that's not regulation side. Um, often our practices overlap. And so sometimes I'm running lacrosse practices, like round ball drills in the swampy area next to, and it's, um, sometimes that happens because they're throwing the javelin for a practice field event. If, if we use the competition field any time other than that, there's a risk that it'll end up just like the practice field out past. And even with that limited boost from a lacrosse standpoint, um, into the season, we just have, um, like dirt patches for our early pieces, which is, um, and I think last year we had a hole. So it's pretty, um, pretty challenging. But in addition to just like the, the condition of the field, you know that for every early season scrimmage that I've coached there for the last three years, when the kids get to a full-size regulation field, they're like shocked at the size of the field because their practice spaces are small. Um, and so from like a very typical, like, us standpoint, our offense, they take like much longer to develop because we never space ourselves out because we just really don't even have the practice space either. Um, and so, you know, we have trouble with transition and eventually to get there. But eventually, we're sixty-six percent through this and then all have the spacing worked out. Um, I imagine that if we had a well-lit, usable turf field, it would open up a lot of opportunities for effective preparation. All the sports that are competing on that field. Um, we'd have more flexibility in the early season. A lot of times we get sent indoors. Um, I think if we had that from my standpoint, per field, it's a critical piece of building the kind of program, like, program that I've been asking for. I was involved in the youth lacrosse program for a long time. Uh, I know that Bram has great programs for academics, third type programs. And what's been from kids that I coached is that these talented, smart kids leave because they don't want a, a little grass field and they don't kind of be up prepared when they, when they play against these other teams. And they don't wait until three quarters away through the season um, to really feel like they can compete. Um, and I've coached so many great kids that probably wouldn't stay at Bram for so many reasons. For the academic programs, for the friend opportunity to play in front of the community. But instead, they went somewhere else, play other lights. They wanted to, they really kind of need to prepare for play. Um, I think that coaches, we've done a great job of being creative. I know it's been a great challenge to, I love being creative, but I would really enjoy being creative about like elevating our teams to the next level of lacrosse. I was trying to figure out, you know, where can I find a grassy patch to, to do round balls that are going to reflect that the kids are going to play in the game.
Laura, just a reminder that you're only beginning to appreciate what you're saying, but three minutes for public comment.
Perfect. So I understand. I want to thank you for everybody, everybody supporting this field. And I think as coaches, we all appreciate the significant investment community is putting in as far as energy. Hope that everybody sees that potential in our young athletes at least. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, there are none. We'll move on. Um, addition and deletion of agenda items. Um, I make a recommendation to just move Joe Arardi, who is here tonight, um, to discuss with us the, um, the superintendent search. Uh, to move that search process up. Uh, if we could do it right after school reports, if that's okay? Anybody want to make a motion if they agree or, um?
Yeah, I, I would like to move the superintendent's report by Joe Arardi to master um, the report.
Thank you, Judy. Second?
Second.
Any comment? Can you take a vote? Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And Ivan Dances, Mike there?
Yeah, I'm here, yes.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Mike.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll move, uh, Joe up on the agenda. Any other addition or deletion of items?
Hi, Jean.
Hi.
How are you?
How are you?
Um, Judy, go ahead.
Um, hi, everyone. I want to thank you for having me to do that in person. Um, there's not much going on. It's the beginning of the year. We're starting the phase out of the, you know, syllabus and, um, phase into the more tested quizzes in real education um, that the later September meetings. Um, seniors who are interested in early action are starting to, um, you know, polish up their essays, finalize their comment apps, and figure out what schools they're applying to. Um, most people who are applying for early action, the deadline is November first and for Southern schools, it's October fifteenth. So, um, the dates are coming pretty quickly. So it is a little pressurizing now, but, um, football also brings fun things like football and other activities. So overall, it's a good start to the year, although a little pressurizing for seniors.
Anything else?
Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Board of Education Report. Um, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate the Bram staff, uh, the teachers, the students, the administration, anybody who, um, is getting our school year running. Thank you very much. I know it's not a typical year. Um, we're trying to be as normal as possible while we're still wearing masks and deal with the students who are returning, um, after an extended absence, um, from, you know, the walls of Bram. So thank you for all you're doing. I know you're dealing with a lot as far as, you know, bus drivers and substitutes and contact tracing and whatever it is that you do. So certainly just want to shout out to you guys for getting us going. Um, thank you very much. Um, I also would like to just comment on, um, the disheartening stories regarding the vandalism of the Bram school bathrooms, uh, based on, well, perhaps based on TikTok. I mean, um, I just want to support the administration and the staff and just let you know that any students who report caught that, um, the Board of Education supports you in, um, discipline as per board policy, uh, prosecution. Um, and families should know that they will be required to reimburse um, for any vandalism that is done to our school. Um, it's very sad to hear. Um, we want our students to make good choices. We're here to support them if they don't, but that is a big deal, um, to vandalize school property. Uh, just to shout out to our sports, um, for, I've seen a lot of sports going on, football, uh, especially in soccer. And I see the girls, I only have, I have two sons, so I spend a lot of time in the hallway sports, but, uh, sports are looking good. Uh, Mr. Trudeau is out there and I see lots of good things happening. It's very well organized. This weekend, uh, I was watching one of the games and unfortunately, a student was hurt. And I'd just like to commend, uh, the administration and the staff that was there, the sports trainer. They quickly went into action to support that student and, um, without drama or, uh, any unnecessary attention called to the situation, uh, that student was safely transported out. And I know he's doing pretty well, but he's injured. But thank you, you know, for, for dealing with that. That's one of those things that happens, unfortunately, but it was handled very well. So just want to say, you know, thank you. I really don't have anything else for Board Chair Report.
Kathleen? May I just add something or add something?
Sure.
And when we say the board stands behind, um, any discipline, I, I agree, but I, I would add is that we would want to make sure that every effort is made to tell all of the kids and all of the parents, um. Maybe someone, you know, a different board that said that we think they read it and not just that it was sent home, but we think they know about it because it is a TikTok trend. And I know a lot of parents are aware of it, but there are also parents who aren't aware of it. And I just want them to have that conversation in their household with, with their children before they're surprised by someone doing something maybe for the first time.
Good point, Judy. Well, thank you. Anything else regarding that issue? And of course, we hope our Bram students are representing Bram in a positive way. And, uh, we hope that we have family support whenever it's necessary. Sometimes students make choices that, you know, aren't choices we would hope they would make, but when they do make them, we want to be supportive, but we also have to understand that there may be some restitution attached to that as well.
Kathleen, I wonder, I don't know if Bram, and if we posted, if we got, um, some Bram pages. Is it something we could share on social media to try to get more parents aware of it?
Um, you mean through the Bram Facebook page?
Yeah, and before the Bram Facebook page. And that's, those of us who are on it could be sharing that just to make sure parents are now. Does that sound right?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. So, um, I thought I would kind of give you a broad, um, overlook of kind of some of the things that, that we're facing on our return to school. And, you know, first of all, certainly the good news is that all of our students are back to full and in-person learning. All of our clubs and activities have resumed. Um, as already been mentioned, our athletic teams are back involved in competition and practice. And not to throw any shade on our seniors a little bit, it's actually nice to hear you complain about seniors and the challenges rather than what we had to listen to last year. Because last year was such a challenging year all the way around. So even though we're wearing masks and modifying some of our activities, it, it's really nice to know that our students are able to come back into the building and deal with those needs and students just kind of have to deal with.
I hate to interrupt you. If you're online, could you please mute? You just get feedback when you guys are muted. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, that's not to say that we haven't had to modify some of our activities. So, um, I think we share with the board that our open house will be, um, remote this year. Where our college fair is going to be remote this fall. And I know Dr. Briscoe and our Athletic Director, Dan Trudeau, are, um, working with senior classes to possibly schedule an outside homecoming dance, um, similar to what we did for the prom last year. And Bram's unusual in this. We're seeing schools across our region who are doing our best to ensure that we're able to bring all of our activities back. But nonetheless, with some modifications to ensure that we keep the building as safe as possible so that, um, you know, we don't have to refer to anything other than full in-person learning. And up to this point, we've been very fortunate. We've had very few, um, positive cases. We have had to do some contact tracing. However, with the high numbers of staff members and students who are vaccinated, uh, very few have had to quarantine. So we're, we're seeing a very different and a much more positive picture than we saw last year. Um, there, there are a number of areas that we are keeping a very close eye on. And I know that if you're paying any attention to the news, some of this will sound familiar. Um, certainly the bus driver shortage has gotten a lot of play on the news. And in talking to other superintendents, you know, there are districts that are really struggling modeling with this issue and finding that they're actually having to shut down some of their bus runs. Um, some districts are asking parents to transport students. We're very fortunate in that we have been impacted, but the impact has really, at this point, been having to combine bus runs. So we do have some of our bus runs running longer than usual, but we're optimistic that we've been able to, um, still transport all of our students. Um, but I have to say that, you know, this is one of those issues that we kind of look at on a day-to-day basis because with so few bus drivers, fewer bus drivers, I would say that we have a change in just a few that really pushed us over the year. So Bram has been faring pretty well with this, um, certainly compared to some of the other stories that I'm sure you've, um, heard in the news. Another challenge that many districts are facing is the lack of substitute teachers. Um, in our conversation with the Commissioner of Education on Friday, one of the local districts shared that they had five classes that they didn't have coverage for. Due in fact, they, they simply had no subs. I think the board supported us in a fantastic way a number of years ago in putting a permanent substitute at each of the buildings. And we're continuing to be very fortunate in that we have a cadre of substitute teachers who are able to rely on. So, um, fortunately, it's something we have some concerns about, but, um, it, we've been, we've been making a progress with substitute coverage, um, this year. Um, teacher shortage is a challenge across the state. And I know Dr. Briscoe sees it, I think, almost on a daily basis with colleagues that are sending emails out looking for a long-term math son or a science physician. We're very fortunate at this point in that we're fully staffed. It doesn't mean that we didn't have some bumpy spots along the way. Um, we had to unfortunately, um, and I mentioned this earlier, in an earlier meeting, we had to sunset the early childhood program. It was a part-time teacher role we couldn't find any. We had no applicants whatsoever. And the state was providing no leeway on that. And we had to sunset that program until a future date if we find a teacher available to teach that. So, but right now, we are fully, um, we are fully staffed. Um, but again, you know, that, that comes a challenge here in the district as you have a movement of the teachers and you try to fill in the positions. Um, another challenge that a number of districts are experiencing is as the governor's executive order, which requires each school district employee to be either vaccinated or have a medical or religious exemption. Some districts are seeing that they're having staff members who are not only refusing to be vaccinated, but they're refusing to be tested as well. So there are some districts that are concerned that they may lose enough staff members that could actually impact their ability to continue, um, running as they typically do. Here again, I think we've been pretty fortunate in this area in that we don't anticipate that we're going to take too big of a hit in that area. Um, in terms of the vaccine mandate, this does come from the governor's executive order. And essentially, we've got just that all school employees be vaccinated or have received their first shot by September twenty-seventh. Staff can apply for medical and religious exemption, which would require them to get tested on a weekly basis. Bram is hosting a weekly testing clinic on Saturdays. So there are plenty of, of here on the spots in the area for staff members to get tested for the option need to. Any employees that are currently hired are able to simply refuse to get the vaccine and just simply choose to be tested on a weekly basis. That particular exemption will, um, retire at, after September twenty-seventh. So any staff members hired after September twenty-seventh will no longer have that option. They'll need to be either fully vaccinated or use a, um, the religious or medical exemption. Bram, I think, has done a great job of working together as a team to developing a process through a program which is called iVision, which manages our employee, um, pay and a lot of our purchasing. And we've, we've created forms that allow staff members to upload their vaccine status and their vaccine cards into iVision, providing degree of confidentiality. And it's a program that everybody's already familiar with. However, as you can imagine, as we are getting these new mandates seemingly on a weekly basis, it certainly is stretching our, uh, employees in terms of making sure that we're keeping up with things and meeting the deadlines. Uh, we have a emergency meeting for superintendents today regarding some additional changes to this mandate, um, possibly moving the timeframe up a little bit. So, um, we're certainly very conscious, conscientious of that, making sure that we're doing our thing. Um, one of the challenges is that the Department of Health does seem to keep changing things on us a little bit each week. So it's a, a bit of a challenge. But I think the district has done a really fantastic job of making it simple for employees to do, giving us full access to everyone's status so that, um, I think we've done a good job of complying with that. So it's, you know, the good news, I think, outweighs the bad news for Bram in that we've had a great opening. Our students are back and fully engaged in our activities. There are challenges out there. Um, we've been able to thus far manage and kind of stay above them. Um, I put it out there because I keep coming back to next month and sharing that some of these challenges maybe are, are more of a challenge a month from now. But right now, I think we're. But right now, I think we're in a good spot.
That's okay.
Okay. Good luck with that.
Thanks so much.
Sure. If people want to become substitutes, is there a process? How do they feel about that? If they were, talk about it.
Sure. So they, all they need to do is on our website, there's an HR tab. They can hit it and fill out an application and apply. And they'll interview with one of our building administrators. We'll walk through all the paperwork and requirements. So yeah, anyone that's interested in becoming substitute, am I detecting that maybe some of our coordinators are thinking about a different opportunity to serve Ram? I like that. We need bus drivers too. Good choice. But yeah, that's a certain.
Well, does it pay for the bus driver to pay more than the sub?
We'll have to do some analysis here. Off the top of my head.
Scott, about the bus shortage, when the runs are combined, are they, are parents notified that they're going to be late here for that particular bus? I know sometimes I would see something about a bus, but I don't know if it was happening in the afternoon and it wasn't planned. How is that dealt with? So parents are notified?
I can verify that he wakes me up many mornings at 4:00 AM with a note that bus three and four had to combine. And Scott Butts also gets woken up and he sends the message. So we have distribution lists for all of our buses that he can let fail.
Great. I'm sorry that you guys have to get up there.
It's good. It's all good. It's all good. It's all making it work. We'd rather deal with it then and make it work than have to deal with it later with confusion with us.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott?
I do have to give you the shout-out for managing the bus challenge work and so close to the bus company and helping to make sure that that information gets out to families and making sure that we have solutions. And be willing to rely on us to help. I did ask Dr. Briskill and Dr. Sarusi to report out from the school perspective. And I stress, I'll be delivering some of that more down news about some of the challenges we're facing. So just focus on all the fantastic things that we're seeing.
So we went from the general for both schools to the specifics. I guess we can start with the attack to COVID-19, which Scott already mentioned a little bit about. But obviously, masks are still in play for us. Social distancing as much as possible. We're trying to do that. Lunch has been a big issue for both schools. We went to free lunches, basically also to help out the high school because they needed a place to move a fifth period lunch that was rather large. So they moved them into the middle school cafeteria, which is why some folks are saying that their kids are eating at different times, a little bit later. We have sent notices out to parents and students reminding them to bring a snack. Not good so far. Everybody loves the food. Everybody's bringing their snack. And so we seem to be okay. Contact tracing and quarantine continues. We've had very few at the middle school and not too much at the high school. So we're happy about that. And the good news is our picnic tables are coming back. I just got a notice this morning. Nice good shout-out to Lions Club. Thank you very much to them for loaning us their 40 picnic tables, 20 for the high school, 20 for the middle school. They get a lot of use out there. It's something that the kids really enjoy. The faculty really enjoy. Nice weather, they'll go outside. And also thanks to Scott Butts and I believe the C Mark S. Grant, we were able to purchase some Wi-Fi extenders outside. So not only do we have picnic tables, we can now actually sit there and kids can go online if they need. Those are some impacts that we're seeing.
But the good news is that we did start the year off with three days of professional development for the entire district, which focused student engagement. And we had two presenters, Alan November and Gary Peterson. And they spent an entire day with our staff, working together as a large group and then in breakout groups to look at specific strategies for different content areas. The teachers really took to this because, as you know, for a year and a half, our students have been somewhat disengaged and passive in the educational process. So this was to spark some new ideas for the teachers to get students back into the private process and being active members of the classroom and not hiding behind your screen anymore. The middle school, I know, is looking at inquiry very heavily this year. And we are at the high school for our teachers who teach inquiry classes. We have them in the core areas for ninth and 10th grade and then 11th and 12th, we are AP research and seminar. So there's a lot of good work going on and our teachers are centering their work, their goals this year around engagement and social emotional learning. And we do have a district committee this year that is focusing on social emotional learning and equity and inclusion and diversity. Still working forward to the work that comes out of that. And of course, we did the mandatory professional development as well, which is not as much fun. But I would say, if you get a chance to watch our homemade bloodborne positive video and beer shakes your burger, you enjoy it.
So something to celebrate. Every once in a while, you come across a piece of data that you feel like you should share with somebody. So I felt myself, a fellow administrator, felt we should share a goal that we had. I think we brought to you when the former principal was around at Ram High School. Almost said random again. And the current principal, we've all been working on this goal for a couple of years now. And it's almost obsolete. We wanted to raise scores over four years by five percent on PSAT, SAT. So the colors there represent cohorts. I'm one of those people that like to look at cohorts. So when you look at like 2019 to 20, and you look at ELA 446, and then you look at our last year's ninth graders at 498, they're learning something. We keep talking about gaps and things like that, but they're improving. And when you look at 2018, 457, and SAT, SATs 522 and 10-3, they are steadily growing. So when people talk about Ram, you know, academics pull their heads up high and they say, look, we made progress every year. Sometimes we see it. Sometimes we feel like we don't see it. But when you put it on paper, you're looking at nationally known tests, assessments. Yes, there are dips at times, but when you look at something like this and you see the progress where they started to where they go, it's impressive.
Are those, are those, I know it's grade eight, 12 PSATs, but then grade nine spring, alright, so we're going, they still seem, are those low for Ram? They still seem low, grade 10?
Now, because the scores, as you see, go up progressively. If you look in the 11th period.
No, I understand that. That's just certain from other years, Penny, from grade 10 PSAT scores, I thought they were higher than that. Can you just share that information if you don't have it handy, maybe via email to all of us?
Yeah, we certainly can do that. But what I'd like to point out is that these are cohorts, which are.
I understand that. I understand data. It's just a, it's just a question.
No, I get that. And I, it's a good question. I think just this time we were looking at the cohort because that was part of the goal. But certainly, we do still see growth. I mean, we don't always see, every class is different, obviously. And their growth, although it's always there, could be slightly different as well. So we can certainly get those numbers. You can see that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it because I, in the sense, you know, a national conversation about the impact of COVID. And I understand the cohort and all of that. But it's just, it would just be one more piece of information for us. That's all. And I do appreciate that this is in cohort and I do understand what that means. So thank you.
Yeah, and I just would like to also point out too, that, you know, we still did very well on our SATs this past spring, which was not the case for many schools. Our kids showed that even though they might have had some, you know, lack in their learning for a period of time, that did not necessarily show up on the standardized testing. So that was a comment.
Yeah. Well, thank you. That's interesting too.
Couple of questions on that slide. What we wrote those goals, and it hasn't been four years now. I would guess that we would have to revise them and they would, some of them came out of the, I don't know, was it a program of studies? Was more like strategic goals that we had. So that might be a document that we want to resurrect again now that, you know, we're all back in. I think we kind of took a break from some of that information, but it might need to be gone back to and reviewed. Very positive to, you know, it's good to hear that kids are making progress. One question that doesn't come out of that data is for the students who did not, or the students that, you know, did have some regression. It may be just some time that they need, but I'm just wondering what will be put in place for those kids if they're not making the type of progress that needs to be made. They're obviously not students who have cognitive deficits, but may have curriculum deficits. And therefore, how do we support those students?
Yeah, and we do that through our data teams. And we look at the individual progress of every student. And we look at the individual questions that are on the test and how are students sitting on each of those questions? We have really dug deep into the data for the last seven years. And we have had products out of that. One example is we have the SAT Math Prep, which is for students who show lack in progress on the PSATs and SATs. And they take that as an elective. They're encouraged strongly to take it as an elective. And of course, we have other classes that students are urged to take, like our reading or English or writing and math courses that are working at population of students. And so of course, there's a variety of resources. We can, you can make sure that the individual students are most in this, in your data.
One of the things just to add on to that is if you look at the department of health in 2021, 22, we did have a meeting with our department coordinators and picking up what are the number of students that we call them gaps. We're calling them where are they right now? Because the lack of, or I should say, lack of where we ended up last year is where we need to meet them to move forward. So, you know, we're looking at where the students are now, diagnosing that, standardizing tests or curriculum-based assessments. And then going forward, what do they need to improve? So we did have some really good scores, but again, curriculum wise, we're always looking at where the kids are currently and how to move forward. Which means that the teachers in different classes are going to have to talk to the other teachers to be, okay, this is where we ended up. We're going from there forward. It's a big conversation to have.
I asked you to say. No, I was just going to say something interesting that I just read is standardized testing for some students can break economic barriers. For instance, if they scored extraordinarily well on standardized testing, that can put them into opportunities and things that otherwise they would not have been exposed to. So I think what's starting to happen is that they're more beneficial than anything. That they're not really used to borrowing anybody from and anything or as a barrier. But they're used now for some real heavy merit scholarships and other kinds of things, which is, which is exciting. And that is the only reason that I, that I ask because these seem, you know, in my memory may not be perfect, but these seem a little bit lower than some I remember, perhaps in this remembering. But nonetheless, it's just another good piece of information to have.
Yeah, we definitely had a class a few years back that was probably pretty outstanding. And so if you compare any of our other classes to that one, they're probably going to be available there in comparison. So you're right that there is probably numbers to be that you've seen that were higher than these. And one thing that I would like to point out too is that we have reached this goal before the four-year mark. So, you know, that's why this year, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel, but we are looking to continue our growth with our students because of the year and a half that they've had, which is why our department goals are speaking to the individual student growth in the classroom. Which will, you know, by, just by nature, won't help the standardized scores as well.
You mentioned SAT prep for math. I'm wondering if this is the year to consider SAT prep for ELA. I know it's embedded in, the teachers try to really work on that, but based on the fact that students were out for a year and a half, is it something that should be considered for those students who, you know, that's a, if they don't do well on SAT, that could really be a detriment to their ability to attend a college of their choice. So I don't know if Esther funds could be allotted to that or if that's something, you know, the department heads want to talk about. But it's probably a good idea to look at considering the fact that there are students who have not had full instruction. They may have done well, but they don't have full instruction to do well on some of those standardized assessments, which mean a lot in the world outside of Ram.
I think right, the reason why we haven't seen a PSAT English course as of yet is because we do have a lot of other courses that catch those students, like a rating for success course. So we were already seeing those students being supported in that way. And math is a little bit different, the way that the math structure works in terms of if you start at a certain math level in freshman year, it really kind of piggybacked you from moving really up to that higher level in math quickly enough to catch it on the SATs. So that's why they felt that there was something different needed for them. So it's not something that can't happen or won't happen. It's just that in terms of what we were seeing, what we're offering, there's some individuals that have gotten the math, which is not very great.
And that, that sounds like a question. I think Scott, it goes back to that strategic planning committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And math traditionally, not just for Ram, is the area that students do kind of do less well on.
And I don't want to focus on the students who might need support because we get them on acceleration for those students who can move forward. And maybe this year is a great year for them in math for whatever reason. But then, you know, based on the instruction they receive and supports could move. Are there options for kids to take acceleration over the summer? Or to do anything that they can so that they can move forward in those math classes and get back on track if they need to?
Yeah, so you've had students do that. We have, I think, online courses and some deep courses at local colleges and also other online offerings that are credited in our online policy. And I started with my head in the night, I just lost it. We didn't look back to you.
I'm glad I mentioned that.
Is that, is that for every learning level? Because I'm, you know, here, and we've all had different experiences in life. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to have the experience of someone who, you know, tests them at 99-plus percentile on this, but doesn't necessarily have the best GPA. So I'm thinking about that kind of kid too. And this can open doors for them. And I would never want to see a child have any doors not open that could be open. So do we have that penny for every level of learner?
Yes, we also are continuing to grow in our data collection and correlating our data so that, you know, sometimes a student can do really well on a standardized test and math's a little bit passing, vice versa. And so we have a program called Performance Matters, which is part of our Power School package that houses all of our student data. And we're really guiding them to that this year to be able to sort of really look at the individual student and the various data points that are to have for them and what that shows us and what we might be maybe missing, or opportunities that we can continue to provide for those students. So I think it's just going to be another avenue that we can take advantage of to make sure that we're using the data to help each student individually and also each other.
Well, just to follow up since I started this, I, you know, the case I was talking about, I would not have advised anything, anything different. It's just that the child could pick up this course load possible because of interest, not for any other reason than interest. And it doesn't work on one's benefit for GPA. But I will tell you, that in college does pay off because they're used to working that hard and taking those difficult classes and things. But it's just, it's another perspective that I can share for the strategic planning committee or another committee. Because. or another committee because, um, it, it's valuable and it's about, you know, who is and who isn't, like a kind of profile of the kid or someone that I'm aware of in college. And that's always where we're trying to look is, um, military career, um, college, whatever our students do, job training, whatever. So, so I'll, I won't take up this meeting on that, but I do think that I have some very valuable information to share on that.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. It's, it's great to hear those stories so that we can continue to, uh, to identify students and to also just support them.
Hi, this is Jean. Um, I just wanted to kind of let folks know that Higher Ed was quite aware of how COVID impacted people. Um, looking at an article here by one of the, uh, inside Higher Ed, two-thirds of four-year colleges will not require tests for admissions this year. Um, so they're aware of the impact and they have listened, but there's also been a growing trend to downplay test scores in general because, uh, it, it's an, it's an economic game. Those who have the means can hire all sorts of tutors. I know people who've spent five thousand dollars trying to get their kid into really good schools, they get all these extras. And so Higher Ed looked at that, too, and said, that's problematic, um, in terms of the fairness overall of these tests. So I just want to kind of have that other perspective here.
Yeah, thank you. I, I did want to point out as well that in talking with all the different principals across the state, um, math this year did dip down for everybody, so we shouldn't be surprised by the math scores falling a little bit short than we're used to. Um, and that's really a product of COVID because, um, during quarantine, um, it's a lot easier to skip some content in English or social studies, let's say, and still be able to keep up the skills. Um, but with math, it's so sequential and it builds off of each other, each concept to the next, that there, there definitely, that's the area we'll see, um, the dips in first. So I just wanted to point that out, too. And I think the college is obviously recognizing that as well. I don't think we can, uh, cancel our students.
Kathy, are you, um, what you just said made me think, are we, um, trying to get information from our college students who are in their first and second years of college on any feedback from them or is that something we consider doing?
Yes, we do that by, um, surveying them and we do do a pretty good job of that. Um, so we should be getting some of that information throughout this year. And also, um, we have our, a group of seniors that we invite back to talk to our underclassmen. Um, at that time, we also talk to them about their preparedness. I, I have heard back from some students just anecdotally who still feel that they were very prepared.
And, um, I, I, I mean, I know sophomores and juniors and senior experiences and they are very prepared. I, I don't know about freshmen.
Yeah, well, we, it's a good thing is that we have a lot of time to help them catch up.
No, I meant, I meant freshmen in college.
Freshmen in college, okay, I see, Jean, right. Yeah, okay, I see, Jean. Yeah, go back to the data that we'll be looking to get this year.
Right, thank you.
All right, next slide. Love next one. All right, so some good news. Um, all of our sports and clubs and activities have been running this year in person and we have our late bus running despite the bus shortage challenges, which is great so they can stay after school and participate. And there has been high levels of participation so far. And I also, um, think it's, it's indicative of the time period in which our students are trying to get back into the swing of things and get socialized and be here at the building, that they've come to start three new clubs so far this year. So we've, uh, we'll be starting a ping pong club, a culinary club, which I'd like to give a shout out to Wixens. Um, our chef and manager from that group is, is going to be advising that. Um, and they're very excited to work with the kids and, uh, I think that's just gonna be a great, um, collaboration. And then a knitting and crocheting club that both actually students and teachers want to participate in. So it's just showing that kids want to be social right now. I think that's a really good sign. Um, we're doing field trips, scout shadowing, um, students are volunteering in the community again and are engaging in work experiences, which they haven't been able to do in the last year and a half. So I know they're excited about that. And then we have several committees this year. I mentioned the district SCL committee, but at the high school, we have the vision of a graduate and skills and dispositions committee, which is, um, continuing to work with our mission of what we want students to be able to do when they graduate here from high school. It starts in the middle school, but it works up into the high school. And we're really taking a look at how we're measuring that, helping students to self-reflect and then be able to, um, showcase their learning throughout their four years here as a, as a capstone or, um, portfolio process in the beginning of the year. And we're excited to do that work because it was put off. Obviously with COVID, we didn't think that running committees was necessarily the, at the forefront of what we're doing, but now we're glad to get back into that work. Uh, we'll be looking at our advisory program and seeing, is it still doing what we, um, intended for it to do, which is to provide each student with a mentor in the building? And if not, then what, what do you want to do differently? So we'll get to reimagine that. And then, as you know, we haven't had any junior finals last year and not this year, so it seems to be appropriate for us to take a look at that process and say, you know, when we can come back to that next year, um, what would that look like? Um, do you want to continue doing the affection that we have? Um, will it be different? What do our students need, um, to be prepared for college? Um, so it's a lot of, a lot of the lack of work, but we have a lot of teachers who are staff members, parents, everybody who are looking to, um, be a part of those committees and we started them already. And so hopefully throughout the year, we can give you some reports about the work that's been done there. And just honestly, most important, food. Students are raving about, um, Wixens. They are putting out great products. Um, I've, I've been eating their, their lunch every day, which makes my life a lot easier when we're not bringing my lunch every day. It's really great quality food, there are a lot of variety. Um, they look for student input and even though it's healthy, it's still tasty. So there's a lot of things to try out. So if you're a big step by a grown hunch, I, I invite you to come and share the, the variety of foods that they, they got right. And they're really a great group, I like working with them. Um, they really do want to be part of this school community and feel like a partnership, so.
Are they still, are they still going to free breakfast?
Yes, free breakfast and lunch, yeah.
So at middle school, and didn't want to sort of build into what the high school is talking about, but you had very similar experiences. Um, our seventh and eighth grade team day was a really big success this year. Last year's Catholic boys ended up seventh grade, sort of like welcome to RAM, here's how to open your locker again, here's what the school looks like, um, here's the cafeteria, there's the offices. We found we had to do that for our eighth graders this year, too. Um, so we incorporated that on the second day of school. First day was getting used to the classes, the second day, eighth grade day, the second day was, here's an introduction and here are your teammates. Uh, it was a big success going around. We heard kids had a good time playing different games, basically meet the other kids on their teams. Sports and clubs are off to a great start. We have a lot of anticipation at both of those, those levels. Clubs have just started up. Late bus is a big help as usual, especially for middle schoolers, you're not gonna ride home usually after school. Um, I've already mentioned the free lunch ways. That seems to be going well. The comments from the kids are they love the food. Coming from the elementary where they got one lunch or one, one type of lunch, two types of lunches, they're like, you have a choice? Plus they do like the ice cream, too. And evidently that's healthy food, so we're happy about that. Um, one of the things we are doing at the middle school is our focus this year, along with PD focus, which has been student engagement and SCL, we've got it in student engagement piece and also sort of moving towards a culture of inquiry. It was one of the things that came up on the professional development survey across the whole district, was teachers want more information on inquiry instruction, problem-based, project-based learning, critical thinking and problem-solving skills and how to incorporate those things with you students engaged. So we are, we've moved towards that focus. We sort of kicked it off with team leaders over the summer. Um, and then today, the faculty meeting, we sort of, I quickly introduced, uh, one type of strategy to staff that we could be using as sort of an overall teacher goal along with, that supports the question of the whole district. We had a nice couple of weeks so far and we're looking forward to next one. Thank you.
I got one. Is there any thought to maybe, uh, what you guys are making for lunches? I know my son is a seventh grader, uh, in third wave lunch and last week, three times, he did not have a choice and today he did not either. And I know if you guys see on Facebook, everybody's got a phone, everybody's got a camera, a lot of people are posting pictures about, you know, only getting half a lunch because that's all that's left.
I can, I can talk to the Wixens manager about that. As far as I go, I end up on the third lunchway, the kids all get a full meal because they, they have to get certain things, qualify for a formal, and they have pulled stuff over from the high school they had.
You didn't see the picture of the lone hot dog at the girl's?
I did not. I did know we ran out of pizza and that was a problem. Pizza with pepperoni is a big problem for kids, but then the next day it was leftovers. So it's very, it also depends whether it's sort of tacos or nachos. There's a whole, you know, the process that's in the kid's mind is always different every day. I didn't see the hot dog.
So, Rob, you're just asking that regardless of what lunchway, that you have the same options, whether your first lunchway or third?
Correct, just maybe they're not making much, you know, my son's not very picky, so he eats whatever's there, but I know there are other people in his class that are very picky and some of them aren't eating lunch because they didn't pack a lunch and then the only option is something that they would eat.
I think that as long as they're communicating the things that they want that aren't there, that this is very, um, responsive and we'll make sure that there's enough of whatever they're looking for. But if they're just looking and seeing it out there and walking away, that could be the problem because I know that sometimes they don't want, you know, depending what time they go up there to get the, the food, um, all the time I'll go in there and there doesn't seem to be a lot, but it's because I'm sort of in the off minutes, they don't want everything after all of once sitting there getting bad meaning. So you might just have to say, hey, do you have any more of these? And they say, oh, yeah, it's back in the kitchen, I'll go grab some food. So I always start with middle schoolers to probably be advocates of themselves, but I do think that if they can voice what they're looking for, that they would probably see more actions.
Thank you. So, um, at this point, we have moved, um, Dr. Aradi, so we're gonna get to the process, um, up. Dr. Aradi, are you there?
Are you, Kathleen?
Hi there.
Oh, are you? Congratulations on your board leadership.
Uh, thanks. I know, uh, somebody who might have helped me get there, I don't know.
Um, I, I'm ready if you want me to start. I've got probably three to five minutes of information and more than willing to answer questions. Does that work?
Absolutely, Joe. Thank you for joining us, first of all.
You've just got to thank you.
Joe, just, just to do an introduction in case anyone in the audience may not, you know, have, have worked with you, um, last year, Joe Aradi is the consultant who the district has hired to complete the superintendent search. Joe began the process, um, last year. We put it on hold during the, um, COVID piece. Um, so Joe is picking up where he left off and, Joe, thank you for joining us again. Um, and Joe will kind of walk us through the process that he'll be, um, facilitating this year first.
Scott, uh, Scott, thank you. Um, school board members, uh, I believe just from seeing your, your pictures and names, I know many of you, not all of you, uh, and more than willing to, and I'll hit you my, my, my cell phone number, give me a call and I'd love to conversation with you if you have questions. But let, let me just give you a, a wide view of what I think the world looks like this year. Um, I, I think to, to start with, finally, congratulations to the State Department for allowing, uh, your superintendent to come back for a second year. God bless. Um, with that being said, your target date, uh, for your new superintendent is July 1, 2022. And the land of administrative contracts in Connecticut, in nearly all contracts, there's a ninety-day clause, which is an opportunity for the, the district that will be sending your new school leader to hold that person for up to three months. So if you play this from a backward design, I think your two most important dates right now are July 1, which means that you want to be hiring your new superintendent in March. Your second date that I think is most important is that, yeah, a- at least from an applicant perspective, they want to be hired by the board they will be working with. I'm assuming, it's an assumption, if I'm wrong, just raise your hand, let me know. I'm assuming there will be some board movement and change in November. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So here's what makes sense to me for the broad picture, that, um, on or around, um, November fifteenth, we launched the formal advertisement and we do it just like we did last year, a, a real deep dive locally, regionally, national presence. And we advertise from mid-November through January 1. That gives you about a five-week window, uh, to gather applications. We come back after the holiday break and review our applications as a hiring committee. Um, and Kathleen, if you haven't yet, at some point next couple of months, um, name your board, uh, as the hiring committee. Um, and that's easy to do, I can work with you or Scott can work with you on how to do that if you haven't done it yet. And we would hold interviews in January, finish them in February and positions you perfectly for a February, early March appointment, that person having a tremendous amount of time to transition, um, get to know your district, work in partnership, um, with your present superintendent and really be able to hit the road running on July 1, 2022. So if, if that big picture works for you, what I will do is, is granularize it for you most likely this Sunday and try to send out some specific dates for your calendar to begin to hold them, well in advance, and you have plenty of time. The interesting piece right now in Connecticut, this has not happened in the four-plus years that I've been doing the work, uh, is that this is an incredibly slow time for openings in Connecticut for superintendents. And I believe presently, there are no openings. So that is, that optimizes, I think, the applicant pool, the potential applicant pool for him. But what I can also share with you, the timing of last year was we were closing applications as the State Department had their pivot. Um, and I know that many of your applicants are already re-engaged with me saying, when are you gonna launch, when, yeah, where's the process? So I truly anticipate a real deep and talented applicant pool. Uh, and I, I anticipate, uh, many of your applicants from last year, uh, looking to come back to you this school year. So the only thing I'd like to share with you is, and this is just food for thought, not a discussion for this evening, because I know you're busy, but at, at some point, a decision around who the hiring committee will make. Um, in most, if not all cases, it's the board at large and then the question becomes advisory. Um, are you bringing on a teacher or administrator or a parent or central office staff member? And, and those are discussions that you can have internally at, at, at any point. Um, so if that works for you, the brochure that we used last year is relevant. I'll send that out to you again with, I'll mark it up and, and, and bring that to life. Uh, we'll develop a community profile. I had the opportunity, uh, I believe within a half ago, uh, to meet with your leadership team. Uh, it was part of their professional development, had great conversation with, uh, central office members and your building-based, uh, school leaders. Uh, you know, just kicked off the conversation. It was just an opportunity for us to re-engage, uh, kind of profile, beginning of a profile for your new school leader. So, uh, I think we're in a good space, we have plenty of time. It makes sense to me, let's lead with a new board to form, let's make sure that end target date we meet with was no issues and in between, I'll do my absolute best work to get the best applicant pool for you. Um, questions for me in regards to what I shared this evening?
Yes, Dr. Aradi, could you please share the team that you met with? Who, who was on that team?
Yeah, yeah, well, Judy, I'll, I'll do my best, but they all had masks on and it was kind of, it was an intro, I, I, I met with them, uh, virtually, but I think that your superintendent gave you an exact of who I spoke to.
Actually, Judy, it was our department coordinators and building administrators, so it was part of our department coordinators and summaries.
That's all I wanted to know.
I, I have a question, too. So, uh, the, the November meeting, it would be great, Joe, if you could, you know, join the board and provide an update and what you're all about to the new board members and just, you know, go over the process as well.
Yeah, yeah, hey Sue, can I ask you or, or the board at large, when, when you, I'm assuming your election is the second Tuesday of November, when do your actual, when does the transition take place? when do your actual, when does the transition take place, when the new board members coming on and the old board members jumping off? When does that happen?
December, yes, it happens, so, so actually, our, our local elections are November 2nd.
Okay.
And then the, the new boards take their seats at the December meeting. So, it'll be the current board that we see through November, so next October, November, or this next month, November, and then the new board will take their seats in December.
So, it's not like you said, like, it, what's, you said, you maybe need December?
December.
Yeah, December, yep.
And that would work fine for me, that might be a great suggestion. Other, other questions, folks?
Joe, I can tell you.
I will still.
Just, just till, it's December 20th would be the date that I'd coordinate.
Very good. Uh, and I'll send to, uh, Scott all my contact information for those that don't have it, more than happy to have the conversation. Uh, and again, we'll create that same conversation with community, uh, with school-based employees, with parents who are not. Um, and I, I am nearly certain that, um, your applicant pool will be, uh, fully, you'll be proud of. Final questions or final thoughts, folks? I don't see any, I didn't, Kathleen, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dr. Aradi, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, all righty, bye.
Bye. So, we are going back to our regular gender consent agenda right now. Um, we're up to approval of the minutes from August 23rd.
I have, I have something to state on that.
Go ahead, Sue.
On the meeting minutes. Well, I guess, do we need to, I guess, vote, and then I, during discussion, we, I talk about it?
Yep, sure. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 23rd, 2021?
So.
Second?
Second.
Judy? Oh, discussion, sorry, guys.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Making my charge.
Yeah, so I, the discussion item that I have is in the executive session notes. Um, it would be great, because it says unanimously approved, but not all the board members were at the executive session and voted. So, I, I think we just need to be careful to list out who attended the executive session and who actually voted for the motion. So from my understanding, I know Rob didn't vote for it. And Joe, did you leave that night? I, I'm not quite sure you were there.
I was not, Sue.
Okay, so Joe and Rob, would it be counted in that vote? So that's all I have.
And we can update that, Sue, so that, uh, post it as, like that.
Thanks for pointing that out, Sue.
That's it for me, thank you.
Anything else for discussion regarding minutes? Yeah, Paul, vote. Judy?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah, I think it's not that for eight thirty, it's not that.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm gonna ask question, yes. Request for child Gary Lee?
So we have, um, two employees, one, Molly is a Ram High School school counselor, and Lori Leo is one of our high school chemistry teachers, and they're both asking for unpaid leave following, uh, their maternity, which is a lap on our contract, so it's consistent with our, our contract.
So it's not really, I guess, consistent with the contract, because it's not really something that you vote about.
You still vote to approve, well, you vote to approve the entire consent agenda, so, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I second that, I second that.
Thank you.
So thank Lori, I might have a question here, Anne Reese?
Go ahead, Lori.
Yep, thanks, Lori. Um, I was just, I had a question on Marie's. Um, Scott, in the letter from you, it says, beginning approximately March 28, but in the letter from her, it says her anticipated due date is January 2, and she intends to work until 12/23, 21. I believe the return is, um, or am I getting, am I looking at it differently? I believe the return is the, the.
So if she takes her.
Or Scott, are you counting for the unpaid beginning in March, even for leave begins January 2?
Right, I think the act of delay begins then.
Oh, okay.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep, that's right.
So her whole, her leave will be from, to work through 3rd of December through the end of the school year?
Correct, yes.
Or, uh, the beginning of the next, okay.
We take her through, I think, the, um, the beginning of the winter vacation, and then, yeah, she would be taking the rest of that summer off.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, take a vote, Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yep.
And I'm gonna get. Question, yes. Okay, subcommittee calendar meeting dates, enclosure 10.1, old business.
So, this is really, um, in our last order meeting, we talked about resurrecting the subcommittees, and so this, um, reflects the schedule that we used, um, last year. That seemed to work pretty well, so, um, that doesn't prohibit special, you know, specially scheduled meetings, um, I know facilities certainly, uh, we added a number of meetings too, so, um, this doesn't preclude that, but this would give us a schedule to work with. I think one of the, um, kind of new pieces that I don't know that we've had in the past is November 18th. We've added a combined facilities and finance meeting, um, really for budgetary purposes, to look at the, um, proposals from the facilities subcommittee for, uh, 22, 23 capital budget, and then bringing the finance committee to engage in that discussion. But other than that, it still follows the same pattern. Subcommittee, we held up at this point.
Do we want to vote on that? Um, motion to approve the subcommittee, subcommittee meeting calendar?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the subcommittee meeting calendar.
Okay.
Seconded.
Thanks, you all, discussion. Can you call a vote, Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And yes, motion.
Kathleen, I'm, I'm a little confused, are these part of the consent agenda?
No, they're under old business.
Oh, okay.
Are you really busy driving a bus? Three thousand dollars sideboards.
You guys, I know the curriculum director, former assistant superintendent who's driving a bus, and I think it is the coolest thing ever for her.
Well, look at Massachusetts, they call it the National Guard.
I, I know, I know, but, but I, I just think it's so neat, I could, I could drive a bus, I could absolutely do it, but I don't think I'd be safe.
Well, Judy.
One eight hundred bus driver is cool.
We'll put you through the ropes.
That's a tough job, so we definitely appreciate our bus drivers, that's a, that's a, that's a tough game.
No, it is, they walk in the back of the bus, I did not, wouldn't mind the kids backing up the bus, I don't think I could be that.
Um, scheduling of upcoming board of education meetings, um, conversation regarding in-person, remote, or hybrid. Um, so tonight, we're hybrid-ish, um, and we definitely support some of our members who have conflicts, uh, to be able to come in and out. Um, there's a lot going on in public education right now regarding, you know, students and staff, and the, uh, our need to protect everybody. Um, we have just recently switched over to a virtual open house here at Ram, so it's, has something that I, I think we probably should talk about, and we should be continuing to provide meetings, or be participating in meetings in-person, remote, or hybrid. Any discussion?
I, I think at the least, it, it should be hybrid, because you're right, we don't know if we're going to be exposed, and I think even if we think we, we don't have it, if we're exposed, and we have a cold or something, it's best to participate from home, to not, you know, give anybody the chance of having it, so I think either hybrid or remote until it's, until it's cleared up, I wouldn't do full in-person.
Anybody else?
I, I would agree with what Judy said, this is Jean, I, I, you know, the variant, Connecticut College had to go pin it back to being remote because of an outbreak there, I think we should play it safe and continue with hybrid.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, man, I, I agree, I think it's, it's probably best that we stick with the hybrid model. Um, I'd also like to think, you know, give a shout out to the IT people. Uh, you guys have done a great job of coordinating this, um, and a big thank you. Um, I've made the board members know that I've, I've asked for this for a long time, even though we had to go through a pandemic to get it. Technology is, it's always been there, but it's, it's great to have this. Um, a lot of our board members do travel, you know, they're very busy with their family. Um, it's a convenience that I think is, um, you know, that I appreciate, so thank you very much for your time, and the effort you've done to, uh, give us the, you know, the opportunity and the technology to, to give it to Ram and bring it to Ram, so thank you.
I would fully agree with that as well, I also think it's great for the public to also be able to dial in here clearly, see us all there and online, so I, I think it's a huge benefit to have hybrid.
Anyone else regarding whether or not we should be remote, hybrid?
Um, just a, and that would, just sort of raises a question, how much additional work is it? I, I'm in favor of doing this while we're still have COVID raging around us. Um, but I, I'm certainly lean towards in-person meetings, you know, for a public meeting, people showing up for them after COVID, so, but the question is, how much work is it? Is it a tremendous amount of work for Eric to set this up?
Want to share, or?
No, it's not a lot of work.
We take you away from the family.
This all a little harder, so I, just, you know, I mean, it gets up.
To kind of give some perspective of what this allows us to do, you know, the, um, right now, I know for, I believe for all three towns, um, that their commissioner, that the town commissioners, the boards are still hiring, except for Marlborough, I think Marlborough is, I know their board is sweating, was meeting in person, um, some of us attended that meeting, so Marlborough has some in-person meetings, I think Andover and Heverne are still a vote. The Board of Ed in each of the three towns, they are meeting in person. They don't have this set up, so they don't have the ability, um, it would be a fairly significant expense for them to, um, move in that direction. So we really are fortunate in having the option of doing this. And I, and I think as we move through it, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but, but you don't necessarily need to stay out of you doing this each month, you can probably train other people to, to do it as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to add too, Scott, um, the last check coalition meeting at AHM, they purchased something, it was like maybe eleven hundred dollars, and it's called the Owl, and it was phenomenal as well. So there are probably less expensive options than this great setup that you all have, um, for us. But, um, AHM has it, and we're having hybrid coalition meetings, and you can see everyone here clearly. So it's great, I don't know if anyone heard of it, but it's called the Owl, so, just to let you know that as well.
I think, um, just from a board chair perspective, the only thing is, you know, like I know Scott has to be here, you know, if, if everybody shows up here, or we're not quite, like tonight, I'm not sure who was going to be in person and who was virtual. So I think in order to support, you know, just, um, like knowledge for the board chair, whoever's sitting here, or for, um, the administration, it would be helpful if we have some sort of way of saying who's going to be virtual and who's going to be present, so Scott doesn't sit here by himself, or, um, something like that, so it is, um, if, if we are going to.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, for hybrid, I agree with you guys, I think we have to have this option, and I, I, it's 2021, we should be offering this anyways. Um, it makes sense.
I, I agree with you.
Kathleen?
I'm sorry, Kathleen, Sue.
So Kathleen, I send an email to Scott all the time, we're not going to be remote, is that the, is that what you would prefer, or do you want it to? How would you like us to communicate?
I think, uh, as long as Scott's okay with that, as long as he knows she was coming, I certainly communicate with him, and I, you guys do a great job of communicating, it's just like sometimes things come up at the last minute, and that's okay. But I think in general terms, you know, if we could like let Scott know, know within like three days of the board meeting or something like that? Is that a rate, in print, if that's happened, you know?
Okay, three days, you got it, perfect.
So, a- as board members, if you could notify Scott through email, um, if you're going to, you know, be remote, um, that is, that is fine and welcome, just let him know so we know who's going to be sitting out here, and also so we don't waste setting up all the microphones and meeting tags unnecessarily. And if something comes up, please let Scott know as soon as possible, uh, many of you have been emailing me as well, and I appreciate that, uh, knowing who's going to be here and who's not. So thank you so much, I know you're very professional about that. Um, so should we vote on that, or just to take a conversation?
Yeah, I don't think, because we're, this is what we're doing, and we're not, there's no motion or suggestion to change what we're doing, so I think at this point, there's no need to, to cast a vote.
Right, and we, we have a board policy around this anyways, so.
That might be something to review at some point too in the policy committee, just because we are moving forward, just to ensure that we are okay with that, and also for the public who typically ask what the links are and things like that, where they can find them and stuff like that. So moving on? Financials, Eva?
All right, so, um, in front of doing your board packets, you'll have the expenditures and the revenue reports um, through August 31st of 2021. Here's an estimated net favorable position of seventeen thousand, five hundred and seven, uh, five hundred and thirteen dollars as of, um, August 31st, 2021. The district during this time realized two unanticipated expenditures. The law pump that services the competition of baseball fields needed to be replaced for a total cost of eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. In addition, a submersible pump located inside the holding tank for the irrigation system that services the competition of baseball fields had a vortex fitting that rotted and a common attack, the cost of repairing that was seven thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. At this point, SAV is actively encumbering a fund from the budget request to help support the students and all of the items that they budgeted for. The capital improvement fund, the blue and orange stairwell projects will be completed by month end. The H V A C project gets out to it, and advertising is in process, connection with two million dollars not Friday. The capital non-recurring, non-recurring fund, the DOT project is still waiting to close out. Um, we just received some finalized bills and are hoping to, uh, tally all that out to get Eberne, uh, to go ahead and take those. U S B and Tal Timbers are still assisting us with the refinancing process for the turf project, and invoices are not finalized. The people services department is encumbering the tuition services and transportation expenses for their outplaced students, and attracting the expenditures closely so that they can do their excess cost management. Are there any questions about these topics?
I have one. On the irrigation pump that detached, was that recoverable, or is it sitting at the bottom of the tank?
Uh, no, it's like, we didn't just be attached, so it doesn't appear.
Do we have money to cover the DOT, uh, bills that didn't pre-serv?
Um, so that is the topic at the moment, it, it seems like we might have a shortfall. Um, I'm estimating it at about, the high end would be about seven thousand.
Seven?
Seven.
What is, I have seven thousand of the bills?
Yeah, because there, there was a letter that went back and forth on June second from, I believe his name is Ron, um, from Loops, and, um, was answering some questions for Mr. Tierney. And, um, there was something about final invoices and a amount that was supposed to be deducted off of the final invoices, but none of these invoices were marked as fine, so that's where it's sort of trying to figure out what, what is still up on our table. And then, of course, would be, um, two point five percent, um, pullback that is beginning to be happening.
And what was that for?
That's part of the executive process.
They, they, they weren't going for, on a daily basis. For towers? Every, every big project like that, that's why when you did that project, you had that at two and a half percent. So that when you don't get it, you've already got a cut. I don't remember that, it doesn't make much sense. No.
Any other questions?
Okay, hearing that, the next topic is the Ram High School Middle School Activity Funds, um, for student activity accounts, those are balancing, these are for July and August of two thousand twenty-one, and they are matching with the bank accounts, are there any, um, questions on these? Hearing of questions, um, the food service monthly sale expenditure report also is for July and August. Um, the income statement, as we started off last year, so if you go to the far right column, you'll have July and August there, because we actually served lunch for July and August this year. Um, we had community services for, um, under the Seawest Summer Operation. To answer, um, Mrs. Goodman, the, we are currently still feeding students in our building, breakfast and lunch. Um, any additional meals or a second meal would be considered all apart, and of course, we have snacks for purchase that are also all apart. This is sort of different than a last year, last year where we were feeding the community. Now we're simply, we're going back to school, or, or, um, are all back in school, we're just feeding our students, and we wouldn't be feeding, um, do their meals. Um, as Dr. Rizal and Dr. Reese stated, the students seem much happier eating in a cafeteria. You hear lots of happenances and lots of conversations going on, so it's, it's nice to be back to that normalcy. Um, are there any questions that the board may have?
I do. So is, are we, are any of the students paying for lunch?
Um, so we discussed it, and we asked that parents put money onto the students' accounts, so for the a la carte meals. Um, so if they, uh, one of your football players wanted a second meal, so that they can pay for a second meal. Uh, or if, um, the middle schooler wanted, well, the ice creams that we have that are for sale, yeah, that's what the payments would go to, but the meals themselves, yeah, so your breakfast and your lunch, your first meal is free.
So we're gonna, we're, is it my understanding that we will be a negative for the year?
That's not necessarily true, because, um, with the purchasing of any second meal and our a la carte items, there's always the potential to add to the profit, and plus the reimbursement rate from the federal government is at a higher rate.
So I may have missed something, but I'm, I didn't understand how we got to, every child is getting a free lunch? And that's mandated by the state or federal government?
So we opted into that, because the reimbursement rate for the lunches is at a higher rate. We were transitioning from last year to this year, and still unaware of what families might need additional support, and what families wouldn't need additional support.
So this will, this will continue throughout the twenty-two index school calendar?
Right.
So what is, we didn't obviously forecast this, Julie, as far as a negative, uh, we're gonna have a negative balance, I, I'm going to say that.
Correct, yeah.
We're gonna have a negative balance.
Correct, we're still trying to catch up from last year in a year's time, that we will not.
Right. So do we have funds? And how are we going to pay for that?
So as of right now, the fund balance is covering this right now, and at the end of each month, I will let you know with the board that it's a transfer from operating into, um, food service.
Did we put anything in the budget this year to cover that?
No, we did not.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, we're, we're, and last year, we were.
Over, over a hundred, right?
What was last year's number, can you remember?
I don't remember.
It was pretty substantial, huh?
We can get reimbursement, you got last year's loss? We still ended in a loss. You was gonna be reimbursed next year, and you remembered that, I don't either.
So you're saying the reimbursement rate is more this year, so the loss would hopefully be less.
Sorry.
Right, and with students being back in school on a more consistent basis, hopefully there'll be more a la carte purchases as well.
That's all.
I don't know, but Penny and Mike were selling the lunch.
Open to the public.
Even, even with this one, they'll bring from last year to this year for reimbursement.
From the federal government?
Yes.
I don't have to get back to you on that? Any other questions? It may be a deficit for the board to spend, but I, I do hope our students and families are taking advantage of it. Um, I think, you know, appreciate the opportunity to, to have that offered to, to children. You all know that nutrition is important, the student learning, I hope in the end it works out. Something to keep on the radar though, for sure, yeah. Anything else for financials?
Good job, thank you, thank you.
Okay, committees, they're early, I think.
Eight.
Yeah. All right, facilities, safety and transportation.
Uh, we have a meeting, uh, earlier on, I think, this month. Um, some people, uh, which is Rob and I, um, one topic that came up was the, um, additional fencing that's, that the committee decided that we should be put on, I don't know why it wasn't put on, but, um, there's a section by closer to three sixteen road that, um, when they installed the fence, they started from, it looks like they started from the other side, but the, the halls still have a, an opportunity to apartment, uh, three sixteen, uh, playing fields, and, uh, the committee decided that it's important to have that field, uh, that fencing installed. So, Scott, are you looking for a motion for us, or?
Yes, although I can have Eric put some pictures up there, can I email you three photographs? Would you be able to post those? I, I did it right at the beginning of the meeting. I'd say I'll be.
I T, I T, I'm gonna post.
That's a little finger, yeah.
Unanswered email from the superintendent.
So.
That's the one.
Okay, so, so right, yeah.
Let's go back there.
No, no, that, that, we start with this one, start with that one, sorry. So, no, no, go back, yeah, right there. So the, um, the, the netting, netting that we replaced, the netting was a hundred and fifty feet.
What are you doing?
I have to share with them.
You're showing them. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. So the, the, the netting was a hundred and fifty feet, and we transitioned to the twenty-five fencing, which is a hundred and seventy feet. And the way they placed it was centering it on the goal, soccer goal of the field. But, um, go, go to the next slide, the next picture. Yeah, okay, so the, the challenge with the, that, you know, they discovered was that the fencing is asymmetrical on either side. So this is the tennis court side, and you can see that there's, there's one ten-foot section, um, that transitions to the fence that goes along the side, and then Eric, there's a third photo. There you go, yeah, this one, yep. So you can see on the, on the Wall Street side, it left two, two ten-foot sections, um, transitioning to the fourth feet that goes along Wall Street. So, um, in discussing with the committee, there's, there, there would be value to bringing the twenty-five foot section to that, that one, that, that kind of odd wall ten-foot section right next to it. One, it would, it would quite frankly be a little more aesthetically balanced, but more importantly, it, it still would provide, um, some additional safety in terms of any walls, um, coming towards the entrance way to the building there. So, so, Joe, to answer your question, we would, we would need a motion to transfer, um, four thousand from the,
competition field drainage budget to cover the additional section. Okay.
So we need a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion, that we, uh, authorize the superintendent to purchase the additional fencing for the three sixteen field, and fund would be taken from the capital non-reoccurring, um, account from line item, uh, competition, uh, field drainage.
And the amount go? Is that necessary?
Four thousand dollars. Four thousand dollars.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I have a question, so how, how much money do we have left in that line item?
There's currently sixty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents.
And the, the folks that are doing, adding it on, it's the same company?
Correct, Sue.
They did a good job.
Yeah. We, we actually made out very well, because, you know, we were working with, quite frankly, pre-COVID pricing, which they honored. You know, so had we started this project, anyway, the project itself would have been significantly more expensive. Even, even to do, you know, we, we engaged, we asked them, what would it take, how long would it take to add that section? And even still, uh, it, it's, there's gonna be a wait time, just because the materials, that, that hole in particular, the very tall hole, is a specialty item, so they're, you know, they're still hard to come by, and maybe even harder to get transferred or shipped to where they do.
So they'll do that before the winter?
Correct.
No further questions, thank you.
How do the coaches like it?
They love it, and the kids love it. It's, yeah, it just makes life so much easier to not have to, you know, do the two fences, it's not, yeah, it's very nice. It does look great.
It does.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, hi, Mrs. Mary, I just have a question. Um, this is not the money that we told people we were gonna use toward the turf field, is it? Is this the same account that we've been saying we have this money?
There's, um, and I think, Mary, I think what you're referring to is, um, in particular, I think with Marlborough, there was a suggestion that if the board had additional monies in, um, some of the capital funds that we haven't used yet to put it towards the turf, I think, that was a discussion, it wasn't a guarantee, because we, you know, there's a lot that could happen between now and then. But this isn't the only pot of money there, there's also additional funds that are sitting in that, you know, other projects that we did do, for example, that, um, or that had balances, so, um, I don't think we had talked about a specific amount. So this isn't the only set of funds, Mary, that we've had that conversation with, um, it was certainly one of them.
We, we also had a conversation with the towns, Mary, I think, that the, this, the audit, if the audit from next, for this year, the surplus money, utilizing that money, is that what you're referring to?
No, I just, I thought I had some, I, I thought we were calling it time to talk about taking some of the money that we had set aside to do repairs on the field, and use it toward a new field if that was going to happen. But that, that's fine, I just want to make sure we're not misrepresenting anything.
Right, yeah, then, I, if I remember correctly, Mary, the, the, the discussion was that, um, in looking at the bond payment schedule, the first payment is significantly lower than the next ten, because you're just paying interest, I think it was ninety-five thousand. And a suggestion was made, maybe, you know, as a good faith effort, Ram could, um, take some of that capital money and put it towards that first payment. So it, it, it's still a, a general discussion, and there, there still is additional funds in there, so we're certainly not needing the funds to make that possible, should the board decide to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board?
No, thank you for the.
Go ahead, Sue.
I just said no further comments, I was just thanking for the pictures, helpful.
Um, so does the motion, um, correct, is the, or the, or do you have it accurately written?
Um, so authorize the superintendent to purchase additional fencing for the three hundred and sixteen field, uh, transfer from the capital fund competition field drainage project, I have, I have, I have.
Capital non, yeah.
Capital non, I think.
It's the three sixteen field. Did you see the six, six, three, oh, sixteen, yeah, we've got the three sixteen, yeah.
Do I just check in on the voting?
Second.
Second.
Okay, take a vote? Judy?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
I think she left.
I mean, yes, is Mike back?
Lori wants to have a plea for the transcript of the meeting.
Thank you. So motion passes. Finance audit, compliance and insurance. We can be, negotiations. We just started teacher, having a conversation regarding teacher negotiations. No, nothing has been brought to the board yet regarding that, but there's a conversation with Scott and the teachers we need at this point. And we finished the up sue negotiation.
Correct, yeah. And you'll also probably, well, definitely at the October meeting, have an opportunity to ratify your nurses.
Policy? Do you guys need, Jess, Lori, Pete?
No, we haven't.
Program? Judy, anything for East Club or K?
Now only everybody should have gotten the information for the K's class conference and at the beginning of KBA update.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for committee reports. Public comment?
I'll give a shout. Joe Connor, twenty-five Smith Farm Road. I just would like to thank everybody for their hard work over the summer. I, I came and watched the football game on Saturday. The field looked amazing. The crowd was buzzing. The school has looked, it hasn't looked, it's never looked any better than I can, I can recall. And I just think externally, internally, staff, shout out to all of everybody whose hard, hard work that they, they put in. As a taxpayer, I'm very impressed by what's going on in the rim. Again, the board, Board of Education, the administration, the staff, everybody has done a great job. And you should all be proud of yourselves and give yourself a pat on the back because there's a lot of activity in all our towns. The real estate market's up. People are moving to our communities. And that's a, a direct result of what Ram has to offer and what the Board of Education has provided to our, our, our whole staff. So I want to say thank you. My wife says thank you as an educator as well. It means a lot to us that we live in such a great community. So thank you very much.
I think so.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to informational items. We have the calendar of events from the high school and middle school, closures fourteen point one A and B. And we have our discipline reports, fourteen point two A and B. Any questions from the board? Hopefully we don't see those discipline reports go up.
It's just getting nervous, just like the same thing.
Actually with what's going on. Okay, at this point, motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. Second?
I'll be second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
So the field is three one six.
Correct, yes, like three sixteen.